Glad that you would stand. I'd like to have our intern Jennifer Cody lead us to the plate of leaders. Jennifer, can you do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to ask Chief Kern, please lead us in prayer.
Welcome divine providence, with confidence we offer our prayer to you as we begin our meeting to do the business of our city. May we always remember and appreciate the gifts you have so generously given to all, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Give us the strength and wisdom to work humbly, act justly, and know you are always with us. In our prayers always, we commend our service men and women and their families, that they may remain safe and return home soon. With our nation's memorial day, only one week past, we remember all those who gave their lives for others, the greatest gift of love in the face of great evil. We ask God to accept their great sacrifice and help us always to remember their sacrifice. Amen.
And will the clerk please call them over?
Chief Kern?
Here.
Kennedy?
Yeah.
Hatt?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Zier?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
Here.
Derrickson?
Present.
Dorsey?
Here.
Alice?
Here.
Cabo?
Present.
Zadi?
Present.
Discharny?
Here.
Webler?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Sheenice?
Present.
Ruttello?
Here.
Scotty Carr?
Yeah.
Scotty, uh, Rollo, and Taischel? Present.
There being twenty present and one absent, let the record reflect that Councilman Gerald will be with us shortly. He's at a family event. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting will be reserved for members of the public to address the city council. I ask any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda this evening. And of course, there's always your must- be a resident and or taxpayer of the city of Danbury. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Any member of the public, Mrs. Wallace. Just to remind the folks, we all know where Mrs. Wallace is, but for other folks, address would be helpful.
I didn't hear that.
I just say, just reminding people to make sure they give their address. We know where you live.
I'm here to ask a question. Very long, we do have a matter. I wanted to thank you for doing number eleven, which for some of us doing the refunding of the funds. Anytime you can save us money, I appreciate it. So, did you ever get to check to see if thirty million all that we know about, or is that just part of it?
Uh, I'm questioning the Loicic, number fifteen. Is that what Loicic funds are known and used for, Terry Wacht? I think Terry Wacht should raise his own funds. Also, in the request for the resolution within your paperwork, it just says that we are renovating the school building. And the reader might believe you're wanting to end up with a school building and not a house to rent. So, I just wanted to be sure that whoever we asked to check with understands that. Number twenty, uh, thank you for putting some teeth in the housing life ordinance. Many times the folks ignore what the unit asks for, and they have to return over and over again. And I think for hope or final help to get things done. And number twenty-one, uh, I read the report, and although it mentioned, uh, on the Wood Building, the historical house, I never saw it mention the fact that the South Street still uses that driveway for access and egress. And it wasn't mentioned at all in the ad hoc committee, and I want to be sure that before we sell it, that we all understand that that is part of the sale, so that they don't take it away. I'm not sure how schools are supposed to school it in and out of there as we do. I know Mrs. Mitchell mentioned a lot of people who have been there since the Revolutionary War. I wish you were here, she's out of town for the moment, so that you could bring her up again. It sounds like it's a very old house, and I, I hope you find a good person to have it go to, and that they will respect the history. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, the folks. Mr. Gerald?
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Charlie Sotero, resident of Danbury and popular leader of City Map I six thirty. I speak tonight regarding the, uh, reports, the department reports. Uh, the first department I'd like to talk about is the Public Works Department.
One second, Mr. Gerald. Let the record reflect that Mr. Nero is Elvis Town House.
The Public Works Department. Uh, in early April, the Army Corps of Engineers inspected the Still River Channel, uh, in Danbury, which goes through the downtown area. The city of Danbury has a responsibility to maintain that, uh, prevent major flooding, of course, as we all should know. I also have mentioned this in the past, that the common council is the Flood and Erosion Control Board for the city of Danbury, and as such, I think it's each and every one of your responsibility to, uh, monitor these kinds of things. I was disappointed to see that the report from the Army Corps of Engineers, which was issued in the first week of April, was not included in the department reports on the Public Works. I would like to theoretically or report to the ask, have each one of you, as members of the Flood and Control Board, then issued, uh, a copy of the report. I think, I think you all should have it. I think you should see what it says, it's not a good report. No matter what kind of spin you put on it, cars don't, abandoned cars don't belong in the middle of our river channel. Trees don't belong in the middle of our river channel. The Triangle Street Bridge crossing is barely crossable for a pedestrian because of the growth that's coming out of the river bed, which has been cited. Uh, my second department report would be the Police Department report. And, uh, as we know, our headlines in the news times sometimes make news that's already been made. In fact, it was made a year ago, our burglaries have taken a spike. But, if you look at the figures for last year in April and May, the spike was even more than this year. So, just because the news times puts it in the paper shouldn't mean that it's definitely, uh, the case. Last year, there was a major spike.
What? Paperwork? How am I gassed?
Uh, in two thousand, uh, eleven, there was thirty-eight burglaries during the month of April. That was more than this, this year. Uh, last year, there was fifty-four in May. I'm not sure what it is this year, but certainly that's ninety-nine. And the news times, I think, reported, uh, that it was approaching ninety. So, I'm not really sure what all the hubbub is about, but last year was the year that it should have been noticed. And I can speak from firsthand experience, my neighborhood has been burglarized many times in the last several months. And it's never happened before, so I think we need to, to do some ingenuative thinking in the Police Department. I understand there's limited resources, but is seven cars enough to patrol this city? Forty-three square miles, is seven cars enough? Think about it, think about it. We have no more, uh, pressing item than to maintain our safety and security. And I think each and every one of us should be aware of that, and hopefully we get some new thinking in the Police Department. Let's, let's saturate some areas, uh, once a day with police cars. We all know these hotspots are out there, and they're there, so let's pay attention to them. I appreciate your time, and I certainly hope you all get a copy of that, of that report. I think you're doing, it should have been done through normal protocol. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Dr. Evenine P. Rode. Want to, uh, address item number twenty, I think I spoke on this, as you mentioned earlier. I still have concerns about, uh, much of the school community transportation. And like I had, uh, said the last time, uh, though Sean is doing a maximum job now, and is excellent, uh, he's working with the community, if some of these things aren't spelled out, we would be more definitive. If Sean hadn't forbid, he does leave the coast for miles, which I already don't. It would be tough for a new person to step into the shoes and take things literally, to put, uh, spell disaster as what's happened down in, um, other parts of the state, such as Seymour, Connecticut, which I assume is a problem. I'd also like to see the light issue maybe address more of, say, some of these, uh, construction sites that have been torn up for the last, you know, five, ten years. Some of them are very nice neighborhoods, where you're looking at, uh, areas that used to be nice, uh, forested areas. Uh, the blast, it tore apart, and they're just left out with machinery and debris all over the place. Not to mention, like, there's a place, you know, Kennedy, I would like to see something like that, as far as cleaning that up, going to go out with light. Now, there's something that's right in our urgent floor, that I'll just look at every day, actually coming to this building, to get a look at the five stories of rubble that's sitting there. Second, I'd like to address item number twenty-one. Danbury's kind of got a identity crisis going on downtown. We're picking up ways to try to get, uh, people to come downtown, how to revitalize downtown. Many areas, many areas of the state have done such things as revitalization, as far as coming up with a theme, or coming up with, uh, rebuilding of buildings, or doing things that would attract more positive energy downtown. And we've got buildings ranging anywhere from, you know, seventeen hundreds all the way up to hundred A. You know, we've got architectural styles going from Revolutionary War, to Art Deco, to sixties and seventies modernism, things of that sort. Now, here we have a building that, you know, should be saved, this historic building. Uh, this, the, the, the original builder of this building, uh, gave his all in Revolutionary War. That's house burned down by the British. You know, he, he lost everything. Once the war was over, he came back to Danbury, he built right next door to the house that's sitting right now. He built it next to the house that was thrown down. The house has been there since the seventeen eighties, or thereabouts. There's the issue of the access to the, the South Street School. If we sell off this piece of property, okay, we'll put an easement or whatever, to say that we retain that area so the school buses can be driven out. But what about, you know, enforcing? You know, if this building goes into private hands, you know, would we have issues with people parking in that area and such? We have to keep moving that, or moving them, or whatever. I think we should strongly look into the historical value of the building, and I think we should think about preserving. I mean, what is going to be the retail value of it? Is it going to be like, you know, you know, where do we get the value for this building to only sell it? Is it gonna be like the police station where it was assessed at a higher value than when, uh, we sold it because they were gonna tear it down? You know, what kind of controls would we put on this? There's many other, you know, cities in this country that have historical value to their buildings. And hindsight was twenty-twenty, where they destroyed the buildings not only later to put up something similar, or just like it, to say this was the building. We have an original building, uh, we, that was built by somebody who fought for this country in our, one of our first wars, uh, who came back to Danbury after the war, after listening to everything. And I think we owe it to look more into that situation. I think we need to look at more of what's going on downtown, as far as the character that we want to bring to downtown Danbury. I mean, that end of Danbury, from what I understand, is the original section of Danbury. You know, we have the Historic Society down there, we have some historical buildings down there. But do we want to look into maybe cleaning up that whole area to become a historical district, like many other towns and towns? When we look at the rest of downtown Danbury, many of the complaints that come out of here, we would like to clean up, or we would like to come up with some sort of, you know, urban renewal. But, you know, certain people own certain buildings, so they don't want to comply. Now, we own this building. If we sell this building, we'll be running back into that same thing. You know, if we sell this building off a surplus, we'll be winded up that we want to make an historic district later, but yet because we've sold it off to Danbury, or the owner of the property doesn't want to comply or go along with what, uh, things we would like to see happen. I think we should take a good, hard look at where, uh, Danbury wants to go to downtown, and maybe figure out this identity crisis. We all know we have issues, we would like to get people back downtown. We need to think long and hard about how we get people back downtown. And I think we need to come up with a good, hard plan. This building is ours, I think we should give it some time, I think we should severely look into the historical value of it. The history of the individual, like I said, we lost everything for this country's independence. I thank you for your time.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? You have one shot, Mr. Gardner, next member on. Anybody else? Sign done then, we'll move on with our regularly scheduled, uh, announcements. There's a lot of events happening in June, so if you're looking for something to do, uh, we have something for you to do. Of course, the most important date for June is June eighteenth, because that is Councilman Ben Sheenice's birthday. Couple of important things I just wanted to mention to you. June ninth is the National Cancer Survivor Day at Danbury Moose Lodge, and it's hosted by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. It's, uh, twelve noon to five P.M. It's a nice day, it's a nice spot to, to take a ride over and to check out the goings on. Um, at the Kennedy Avenue Showgrounds, the, uh, the Cold Brothers Circus of Stars will be set up there until eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. June tenth is one of the most important events, that is the Flag Day Ceremony at the War Memorial, hosted by the Elks Lodge. It's an important historical day, great thing to bring your children to, uh, to learn a little bit about the history of the country and the history of our flags, obviously. Uh, in addition to that, uh, there's a number of other events that are listed, uh, in the, uh, the schedule that's passed out to you. All of them are important. June twenty-fourth is our annual Lebanon Day Flag Raising Ceremony, twelve noon. Uh, we also, uh, have a, uh, important event, uh, the Danbury Farmers Market opens on the twenty ninth, uh, as well. That'll be at Kennedy Park, at a traditional location, that's on a nice garden each year, that's gotten a little bit better. Uh, the Greek Festival is this weekend, eighth, ninth, and tenth. It's always a good place to get some terrific food and enjoy yourself. I've been asked to mention the June thirtieth event at the Lake Kenosha, uh, at Lake Kenosha by the Commission. It's the Buffer Gardens Grand Opening, uh, which has been a remarkable job in helping keep, uh, Lake Kenosha clean of geese and, uh, and the night, but anyways. But we have a ribbon cutting, ten A.M., some various activities, things like that. The fireworks, uh, will be happening at the lake on June the thirtieth at dusk. That's usually a very busy time, if you live in that area. Make sure that, uh, you make the appropriate, uh, arrangements to get through there, if you plan attending, you gotta get there early. There'll be shuttle buses that'll rerun from the North Street Shopping Center, uh, as well as some other areas that the department's typically done. Uh, but it's usually a good time, very, very well handled. Some people over the years, uh, for those folks watching home, said, why are we doing fireworks on June thirtieth? Why don't we do it on the Fourth of July? That's because they're a lot cheaper on June thirtieth than they are the Fourth of July. Uh, in addition to that, it's easier to host it on the weekend versus during the week. Uh, and that's typically why we've done that a few days ahead of the event, depending on when the Fourth falls. I just want to remind the council that our council meeting for July is July third, or Tuesday night before the Fourth of July. We will try to, uh, um, keep it, uh, as much, uh, tight as we can on that. You know, obviously, a lot of folks may be out of town, as well as residents, so we'll recognize that. I also understand that Sean Stillman's birthday on the eighteenth as well. Is that right, Mr. Yuen? Anyways, there's a lot of events here, uh, please, uh, check them out. If you have any questions or concerns, you can always call my office, we'll be happy, uh, to, uh, fill you in and tell you what the best time to go, yada, yada, yada. So with that, uh, we're gonna move on, uh, to our minutes rates. Mr. President?
Your Honor, I move that since all members have copies, and copies are on file with the Legislative Systems Office, that we waive the ruling of the week this evening.
Second by Mr. Nega, shall there be any changes to leashes and directions to the minutes I presented? Sign done, then I'll try your minds on acceptance. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries. Yet we see. Mr. Majority Leader, may we have a consent calendar, please?
Very certain, can consent calendar for June fifth, two thousand and twelve? Number one, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Daniel Rosemark, the full of agency of Canadawood Lake Authority. The terms expire April first, two thousand and fifteen. Number two, receive the communication and approve the request for additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to line item five zero 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 point five three three eight to the ambulance fund budget. Number four, receive the communication and approve the request to allow the tax collector's office to transfer three hundred and twelve dollars, uh, three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and point one cents to the suspense list. Number six, receive the communication and approve the sidewalk easement for Berkshire Shopping Center LLC, as staples subject to the Planning Commission's approval and the conditions recommended by the Corporation Council. Number eight, receive the communication and approve the change of the first work polling place for the hot sports team primary to King Street International School as requested by both registered voters. Number nine, receive the communication and adopt a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury Department of Health and Human Services to accept scholarship funding from the Connecticut Association of School Based Health Centers, which will enable the school-based health center clinic administrator to travel to Albuquerque, New Mexico, participate in a two thousand and twelve N A S B H C convention, to be held in June twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. Number twelve, receive the communication and adopt a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury Police Department to accept funding from the State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management. This funding, now to exceed forty thousand dollars, will be used to support violent crime prevention and intervention activities and/or to enhance information and communication systems of the Danbury Police Department. Number thirteen, receive the communication and adopt a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury Department of Health and Human Services to enter into agreement and receive funding totaling one thousand and ninety dollars and fifty cents to the State Department of Agriculture. These funds for supplemental staffing of the WIC program, as the staff issues farmer's market checks to eligible participants. Number fourteen, receive the communication and adopt a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury to apply for and accept funding from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance. This funding now to exceed, uh, fifteen thousand, uh, seven dollars will be used to purchase equipment, supplies, and other costs deemed necessary to assist the Danbury Police Department in efforts to increase law enforcement and police services within the community. Number sixteen, receive the communication, take no action on sanitary sewer extension for our street area, contact, uh, zero five dash two two. Number seventeen, receive the reports from the Planning Commission and the city engineer, and approve the request for wire extension for two A Archer Street, it's on H one two zero five zero, pending approval of all plans and documents accepted, acceptable inform, and content to the, uh, city engineer and corporation council. Number eighteen, receive the ad hoc committee report and adopt the recommendations. May I serve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Pleasure, council. And Mr. Hatt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second by Mr. Perkins, please. Any discussion related to the consent calendar? See, done then, I'll try your minds, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Items one and two are of consent. Item Burke, item three, please.
Communication, establishing Board of Education balance sheet reserve accounts. To Mayor Mark Fountain from the council, from Davis St. Miller, Director of Finance. Pursuant to the fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budget process and discussions relating to the Board of Education, the following balance sheets will, sheet accounts will need to be established to ensure the Board of Education has the necessary funding as intended, and that a reserve in addition to providing a certain amount of budgetary flexibility in planning for future capital investments. Board of Education supplementary budget allocation. Please authorize the reclassification of funds pursuant to the, uh, fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budget discussions, which recommended that the Board of Education funding be supplemented with three hundred thousand from the accumulated native continuing education funds, which are currently residing in assigned general fund balance, in addition to the adopted fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budgetary allocation of nine hundred thousand. The new classification of the three hundred thousand will be a balance sheet account and assigned as B O E supplementary budget allocation. Such funds will be made available to the B O E in a similar manner as B O E annual appropriation. The B O E Capital Reserve Account, as required by Connecticut General Fund Extension, Section ten dash two forty-eight, the B O E must return any unspent funds back to the city at the end of the fiscal year. Such unspent funds have been averaging about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the past several years. I would recommend that a separately designated reserve account, which would be called a B O E Capital Reserve Account, within the general fund be established to account for such surplus under the following conditions. Number one, the fiscal year for the city's total general fund, including the B O E annual operations results in a surplus. Two, the purpose of such funds shall be for a technical or capital improvement program that the B O E and for cooperative projects between the B O E and the city, such as inter-agency, B O E slash city operational efficiency projects, which result in lower operational costs for both the city and the B O E. Four, the city shall retain and maintain the fund, funds in the balance sheet account. And private expenditures from the reserve account would require prior city council approval. Please authorize the establishment of both of these balance sheet reserve accounts relating to the B O E. Thank you for consideration, and please feel free to contact me should you have any questions.
Everybody follow that out there? There will be a quiz later. Much pleasure, council. Mrs. Hamley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to take motion, receive the communication to authorize the establishment of both balance sheet reserve accounts relating to the board allocation.
Second, Mr. Nega, and second by Mr. Nega, shall there be a discussion under item three? Mr. Sade?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll pull you to the Director of Finance, Mr. Sam Valera. Just to understand the distinction between these two accounts, and, um, and some members of the public are watching as well, might have a copy of this communication. Is the first one, the supplementary budget allocation, is that going to be an ongoing line item? Or is that temporary to deal with the current funds that are referenced in that paragraph?
Uh, that one is, uh, temporary.
And the second one, I presume that the Capital Reserve Account would be an ongoing line item to deal with surpluses from year to year? And, you know, looking through the particular requirements that would, uh, allow us to put money in that, in those funds, and then how they would be expended, if there was a certain amount in there that had accumulated over the years, and the city needed to utilize it for something else besides the particular items that are enumerated in your letter, could we use that because it's part of our general fund with city council approval?
This is the city's situation.
Okay. So I'm sure, because if, in a way, it's actually, I don't want to classify it as an additional contingency, but it's, it, it's another line item where there are funds that are available for other uses, if deemed appropriate by the, by the mayor and council, aside from B O E uses, that allows us, on our interest rate, to track B O E surpluses from year to year and see it in a line item, but yet utilize it for other, if necessary, with a focus on B O E and city cooperative issues. Is that the intent?
Yes, and for capital issues related to B O E specifically, technology improvements.
Okay.
Because we're always, uh, trying to try to find knowledge for that. And instead of just throwing it into a big bucket, just would set it aside, and leave those dollars available for that purpose, should be, if necessary.
The, the one thing from a policy standpoint, just want to, uh, legislative intent standpoint, is to make sure that it's not looked at or viewed as a way to reduce annual B O E budgeting, and then to look at that money, that surplus, as a, as a way to supplement ongoing expenses. But you have to be very careful in using it for those extra things.
That, actually, you're absolutely right. Actually, you're absolutely right, because it's not meant for operational items, it's meant for those capital items, and that's an important section.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion related? Mr. Scott, a thought.
Your Honor, Mr. St. Miller. Do you, do you, this is an incentive for the BOE to save money. If the, you know, there's no incentive to save money, because the money that they save goes back to the general fund and the city council or whoever uses it for their purposes. I don't know, I think it's a good idea, but if they're going to save money, they should at least be able to spend it on items that they feel were cut from the budget or something else, to give them an incentive to save the money, not to save the money for us to, in the long run, take out the expenses or else. You understand?
Absolutely. And that's why we're setting it aside, the special reserve fund. And, you know, keep in mind, and knowing the relationship that we have with schools, it's not like you set it aside once at the end of the year and we forget about it. The need for the school is a constant need, especially for things like technology. And as we move forward, we know that they have a fair amount of need in that area, so whether the amount is a couple hundred thousand or more than that, chances are it's going to be used up fairly quickly for that purpose.
Thank you.
Mr. Jason.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the finance director, questions? Regarding the city fiscal year, would that be a surplus? Is that figure going to be based on budgetary cash basis or it's going to be based on the audit figures, because sometimes the two are very much different?
Well, it's going to be based, for one thing, the overall, the city has to be in a surplus, right? It doesn't make sense for the city not to balance while the school is running a surplus. That does not make sense at all. So overall, everything has to balance, and then after that, we take a look at it and then we set it aside, should the, you know, ones decide to do so. But to answer your question, we do it after, you know, during the audit process and they go off and after the board make the recommendation on the amount.
Couple more, Your Honor? Now, there's not going to be a cap on, aren't there, to the point of, if you can say you're averaging 250 a year, but it could be 500,000, is this not a cap? They can, whatever that access to be, will go into this reserve.
Yes. Now, keep in mind that, you know, there's a couple different ways that was being, you know, we're going back and forth with the school ones. One was something that was new at the beginning of last year, last fiscal year, July 2111, and that was this 1% surplus, you might have heard something about that. And that allows up to 1% of their prior year appropriation amount, and that would be about 1.1 million, 1.14 million. Now, that's a pretty significant amount, and that would be the amount that they would allow according to that sexual cap that they have. We don't anticipate that amount, but we'll monitor that and bring to the board's attention. Of course, you guys will have that, we'll see it every year. This will happen, come back to you and refer it to you, this is the surplus and where you want to do it.
Last question, Your Honor?
Sure.
Now, regarding how would the BOE access this fund? Would it be added to the budget for the following year or would they have to come to the council and request access to it? Or is it an open checkbook, they can spend it as they wish?
This is a capital item solely, it's not part of their operational budget, right? It's a separate request.
So they would have to request for us, you know, where you sit according?
I think there may be some confusion, though, with the board, because I think they think that they're going to be allowed to roll this over into their operational costs. We're going to have to address that.
We will, but that's really.
Well, they made certain assumptions on hiring and programming based on the early part of the budget process, so we've got to be careful about how we lay this out. I get the gist, they understand capital, understand IT, and very well, maybe they can move some of their expenditures into IT, then three dollars, the other way, you know, for leases and so forth, but I think that's not where I'm at, but.
What was, from a, you know, budget structure standpoint, this is the best way to go, because you don't want to structure a budget into a shortfall, you know, by those knowledge flowing by the government.
They assume they could. Sorry, it's a problem.
Thank you, Your Honor. As in the past, we always talk about, whenever there's, whenever we give funds to the Board of Education, once we give them their funds, we can't tell them what to do with it. But because we are setting up this reserve account, they have to come with a request, and then once that request, if it is approved by the council, it must be used for that request. I don't see that in you anywhere, if there's problems along the lines that it always has.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue there is that, up until the figures are actually audited, whether you have a surplus or not, it's always moving figures, right? So what will happen is, the board of it, within the fiscal year, can spend money, you know, depending on how they spend it, you could even spend it in the following years, depending on what you spent it for. And then once you hit the June 30th and the audit's done, then you actually start talking about what's left over. So leading up to that point, the, you know, what has happened in the past, as you were mentioning, that's not technically a surplus until you, the fiscal year closes, even though we sort of know it's a surplus, it's really not, until you hit that June 30th mark.
And I understand what you're saying, but we're talking about a surplus.
We are only an audit surplus.
What's a surplus?
An audit surplus.
But that's what we're talking about.
Let me just, you're going to the council, we're not talking about any number of this material.
I'm not even mentioning an number.
Because we won't, if there is a surplus, we won't know that until the end of the audit, which won't happen till my seventh.
I just follow up, I understand what you're saying, but I just want to hear from you that any request made after the audit and after it is considered surplus, that the money that is asked for for certain particular capital improvements or what have you, it will be used for that, and it cannot be used for anything other than what it is requested for.
And those are the conditions I would suggest.
Any other, Mrs. Stations?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. St. Miller. I was just wondering, what exactly are the continuing education funds?
Those are the funds that have, each year, they have a certain amount of activities that go on related to outside the normal programs, and these are funds that have built up over the years, well, part of that, I hate to word it, the GASP, there's a GASP that came out last year that basically said, this is how you're going to have to account for these different funds, and it brought it on to the general fund balance sheet, and then it's about $1.1 million, and I think it's more than that, I think you are, in any, but. And what that, it said that these funds have to be kept out of the city's side, unless they're specifically restricted. Those funds have been identified as being restricted at this time. And so those funds would be utilized to the city's discretion, and we would identify $300,000 to be utilized as part of the budget process, and that's how, you know, we help supplement the budget for the board of debt. So the, the city has decided to utilize those funds for board of debt purposes, and will gradually continue to do so over the years.
Yes, Miss Stations?
So they're not funds that are coming out of programs such as the adult ed or, they're not surpluses out of there, they're coming from other sources?
These are programs that were possibly pre-based programs that have accumulated over a certain number of years, many, many years.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Sade.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, following up on Councilwoman Stanley's remarks, I think maybe some of the confusion that some of us council people have is with regard to the legal distinction between, once we appropriate funds to the BOE, what they can do with them, and then maybe specific capital project appropriations that are outside of annual operational budget. So, for example, we approve it to, you know, 100x million dollar budget, once that's approved and goes to BOE, we cannot micromanage or control that. However, is there a legal distinction? I think there is. With regard to these surplus funds, if they're specifically approved by the council pursuant to an understanding between the city and the BOE for particular capital projects, that that's distinct from funds which go into the annual operating funds, which is what I think Councilwoman Stanley and others, you know, are concerned about, because we can't manage it once they have it. Is that, is that correct? There's a legal distinction in the, in the way the funds can be governed?
Well, that's, we have it structured that way. To answer your question, there is, you can, you want a part of the budget to be capital up to 1%, but that is not, that, that's not how this is set up. However, in order for the city to regain control, we set this up as an reserve fund on the city's side, and in order for the funds to be released, they have to go through city council approval with a specific request, you know, whether that is a, you know, a project or a program or whatever they be, of course, they'll go through this, through the council.
It's not operational, general operational budget, that's the distinction.
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing done then, I'll try your minds, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post signify by saying nay. I said, motion carries. Now, see, item four was on consent, item 13, please.
Communication, request for sidewalk easement slash license for EDO and old food restaurants.
Pleasure, counsel. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to refer this to ad hoc committee, consisting of Corporation Council, Director of Planning, and Director of Public Force.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following, Mr. Wentmore, Mr. Levy, and Mr. Perkins. Item six is on consent, item seven, please.
Communication, sidewalk easement from Trees Plaza.
Pleasure, counsel. Mr. Nager, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to refer this to the Corporation Council, City Engineer, and planning for returns.
Seeing no objection, as so ordered. Items eight and nine are on consent, item 10, please.
Resolution, summer youth employment program. City council members, the City of Danbury has another opportunity to continue its successful Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program via funding from the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board. I ask your permission to allow the City of Danbury, through me, to enter into an agreement with NRWI for funding of the 2012 program. Attached in your review is a resolution that will allow the city to apply for and accept these funds. In an effort to provide a better working experience and more efficiently handle this year's participants, I also ask your permission to allow me to enter into an agreement with the Danbury Police Athletic League and Danbury Youth Services to operate the program on our behalf. This agreement is the same as in 2011. Subsequently, we will receive funding for approximately $62,775 for PAL and $35,125 for DYS. We intend to arrange for standard grant agency contracts for these purposes. I ask your permission to enter into those agreements and allow me to execute any related grant documents. These agencies will oversee approximately 65 youngsters for six weeks beginning July 2nd. There is no city match required. Thank you for your consideration and organization. Consider me, Mark E. Fountain, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Pleasure, counsel. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the funding in the amount of approximately $62,775 for PAL and approximately $35,125 for DH, DYS, you know, with the condition that we open this item up for discussion and provision.
Made seconded by Mr. Discounty. Okay, what's your discussion, please? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a couple of things I'd like to say on this issue. I, I've said this before in front of the council, and I'd like to reiterate it again, that we approve so many things that come before this council that say, no city match required, no city match required, no city match required. And I know every dollar that comes into the city is valuable and needed, but I also, I think we have to realize that, that that money is not coming out of our pockets as far as cities taxpayers, but it's coming out of our pockets as state and federal taxpayers. And I think we need to be accountable and hold agencies who receive these funds, you know, responsible and accountable, that these funds are used in a responsible way. I, as you all know, I tend to be a physical, you know, conservative, and I believe we need to watch every dollar. We also, I believe that we live in, in entitled society, that more and more people feel that they're entitled to something. And just, a quick example, I don't want to take too much time, but I observed a year ago, a group of students, young people, and I definitely want to promote a work ethic and have young people work, but I followed this group of young people, probably between 10 and 12 people, who I assume were meant to be picking up litter because they had bags. I followed them from Soldiers and Savior, you know, Memorial to Corner of West Main, all the way to Lake Avenue, and not one single kid bent down and picked up a piece of litter. And I want a program to work, but I want the program to teach these kids a work ethic and not an entitlement ethic. And I think that we need to require whoever administrates and, you know, runs this program to come back with us at the end of the program and actually show us some results, show us what these kids actually did. And, and come back, and if we're going to, like I said, it's not, you know, it's not our money, but it is our money. And I want to see it used for the maximum, you know, potential, and not just as a make-work job. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other discussion? Ms. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, is there anybody here from the Danbury Youth Services or from the PAL?
I don't believe so, but I think Mr. Shepherd can answer any questions.
One of the questions that I have, I believe that this is showing that we're going to be hiring 42 youths from the Danbury Youth Services, Danbury Youth Services will be in charge of, and I want to know if all 42 applicants have been filled?
Yes.
Okay. And also for the PAL?
Well, they've all been interviewed, okay? All students have been interviewed. They will be filled, yes. I'm not sure if PAL does the assignments that they, they write out.
And what happens if we can't, if all 42 positions are not filled?
Oh, we will, there's plenty, oh, yes, there's plenty.
My other question to you is, what kind of jobs are we talking about? These youths will be provided, A, for Danbury Youth Services, and B, for the PAL?
Okay, I'll go through that. Can I make one comment to you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The letter and the resolution don't match, the numbers are reversed. The number in the resolution is accurate, if you look at the letter that was written, it said Danbury Youth Services, he's only at 35, the resolution is accurate, they read it, they can do that. The Jack, Ms. Stanley, last year, the mayor raised the same concerns about how we were utilizing the students, so we made some significant changes by going to the Danbury Services and PAL. The PAL students, they had 10 kids in carpentry and 10 in landscaping. The 10 in the carpentry program built rowboats and picnic tables. They actually ultimately sold some of the picnic tables and really learned about carpentry. This year, we have Jack Kozakowski, our environmental consultant. Jack is taking 10 students and they are building a bridge on the Ige Trail, okay, with a professional carpenter alongside them. So there's 10 there. There's two students who are going to work for a private company called Classified Guys. They are going to make tag sale kits, and they're going to learn about inventory control, quality control, and that sort of thing. We have two They, we have two students who are special needs. They're going to go to We Care. And We Care, which handles people with special needs, they're going to teach them how they, what they have to, to get a job in their future life. So they're really putting them to use the right way, using the agency as well as the students, getting a benefit out of it. So I think now, the difference than when we ran it, is when Danbury Youth Services and PAL, they essentially have a job description for each student. Now, there might be 10 students with the same job description, build that bridge with the professional carpenter, but they have a job description and that's what they're doing. And the clean teams, Mr. Taylor, those were two years ago. The mayor said the same thing that you did, he said, Shepherd, get rid of those, okay? So we have, we have done away with those.
Three years ahead of you.
Essentially, essentially really what happened, when we, when we had 136 students, we couldn't keep a business, we had to do that, okay? We are now, the, the money's diminished quite a bit, we have to compete for the money, and we have enough for 63 students now. We can accommodate 63 students with 63 learning experiences. With the people from the Danbury Youth Services and PAL who deal with youth every day addressing this, if you could hear them talk about how much they care about the end result, and as much as I cared about running the program, I was not the right guy to be running the overall program. Tom Thompson at the Danbury Youth Services, Julie Schmittler at the Danbury Youth Services, Bobby Guerra at PAL, they're the right ones, they care about the kids and the end result of what that student's going to learn at the end of the year.
If I could just interject, we have hired kids out of that program. We actually can get fired, I think one of them, when Wayne and I about the grant program and they wanted to see our statements and, but anyways, it was a good exercise for him, but, you know, we do, we do terminate kids, and if you see a situation like Mr. Taylor describes, call Wayne, call myself, we don't want you to just internalize it, we want to know about it, because we're going to go up in the tower, the team leader will say, you're not doing it, you know, people are watching.
That's the reason why I brought up the terms that I have, because I had gotten...
Entirely different than two years ago.
I would really, really like to know, after the program is completed, if we can have those children come to maybe that meeting and let us know what their experience were like. I'd like to meet them, I'd really like to see how well the program worked, and invite them here.
I'm sure we can do that, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I will say, the difference, when Danbury Youth Services took over, when they started to interview the students, every student has to be on free lunch, they, they have to be on free lunch to qualify for this program, okay? But, so you, that's who you're starting with, okay? But what they did, they went and said to the school system, let me know what their attendance record is, all the students who were applying. The kids with the best attendance record at school, those are the ones that they brought into this program. So they knew they were going to show up, come to work, and that's part of the learning curve on what they wanted to do.
Get their attendance from where?
Attendance at school, attend at school.
And I also, I also was told that afterwards, there's, they all take them to...
Again, in the past life, they went to like Classified, they did a variety of things, no longer.
Because they are getting paid and they are learning something.
And they're learning how to do a job.
And also just one more follow-up, the carpentry, you said there was BA, which was a carpenter?
Yes.
Is that somebody here right from the Danbury area?
Yes.
You know who it is?
Yeah, Bobby Guerra has someone through the school system, and is it Larry?
Larry?
There you go, Larry, it's right there, there you go.
So he's the teacher?
Yeah. And the person that Jack has is a carpenter, Jack Kozakowski and I.
Thank you.
Any other discussions, society?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Stanley's comments raised a question in my mind, just heard you, I heard you correctly, Mr. Shepherd, that two students would be working for a private company, putting together tag sale kits.
Tag sale kits, right.
And just curious, these are public funds, generally seem to be used for a public purpose. Why are their students being posted or, or sent to a private one? Or is that for a public purpose?
No, actually, yeah, you, you, part of the program is to place them with corporations so they can job shadow. They, they want to see more of that, we have a hard time for that short amount of time getting companies to take the kids on, it's just, it's just too short of a, for them, but that's...
That just struck me a little, that's part of the program.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Shepherd for clarifying that issue, and as I said, the program has my support, and I feel much better now that how those funds are being redirected and that we're being more responsible, those kids are really learning something, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jason?
This sort of housekeeping, since we imported the sub budget, of the error, the transposition error, I want the motion has to be changed to reflect that.
I think the motion we fight with the resolution, the resolution is correct, the letter has a...
Can we move the motion then?
Yeah, let's just feedback the motion, so the, so the numbers match up.
Correct.
So, Mr. Pen, do you have that?
What, the resolution?
Well, actually, who was the, who was calling?
I didn't.
Mr. Taylor, could you just reread your motion one more time?
Thanks, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make the motion to receive the communication and accept the funding in the amount of approximately $62,775 for PAL.
No, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So let's, let's, let's put that around so that you can see, okay? PAL amount is 35?
Thirty-five thousand, 125, and Danbury Youth Services is 62,775 dollars. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
And then, so, seconded by, just for the... Okay, any other, any other discussion? Seeing done then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition, motion carries to the unanimous. Madam clerk, item 11, please.
Resolution, refunding of general obligation bonds. Do our problem through the Council of David St. Hilaire. An advanced refund of general obligation bonds is an important debt management tool for state and local government issuers, which is commonly used to achieve interest causating. Because the bond markets do fluctuate daily, it is important that the city has in place the proper authorization to react to interest rate savings opportunities as they arise. The city has approximately $30,000 of existing bonds, 30 million of existing bonds which may be refunded for interest rate savings under the right market conditions. This resolution would essentially allow the city to more quickly react to such savings opportunities as they arrive. However, it is important to note that no such opportunity for savings exists at this time. The resolution requests an amount not exceeding 30 million, city of Danbury general obligation refund bonds with respect to the authorization, issuance, and sale. This amount anticipates a certain amount of interest rate changes and the possibility of including additional refunding bonds if in the best interest of the city at the time of the sale. I respectfully request that the city council authorize me and June regular meeting to move forward with the refunding when a savings opportunity is presented. Please be assured, even if such authorization is given, the sale will only occur if it is determined at the sale date that the terms and condition of the sale are financially beneficial to the city. Please go through your contact leads to require any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Perkins. With your pleasure, council. Madam Sico.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the communication and to authorize Mr. St. Hilaire to move forward with the refunding of general obligation bonds when the savings opportunity is presented.
Second. First, the main seconded by Mr. Negerzep. Any discussion related to the refunding? Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. Through you to the Director of Finance, Mr. Stanley.
Mr. St. Hilaire, please.
Mr. Stanley, when was the last time that we engaged in this hyper refunding?
December 2012.
Thank you. Follow-up question. Does this refunding extend the maturity date?
No.
So once we have a set of bonds, we pretty much keep the same maturity date, the end of?
Yes, refunding does not extend the maturity of the original authorization.
One more question. Is there a before and after list of the items that would be included when this refunding?
Yes, we can add that to you. Right now, the bonds that we're looking at were issued in 2006, 2007, 2008. Keep in mind, it fluctuates shortly, the market, probably only give it about $16 million in balance, that could provide the city with a pot of $1 million savings.
I'd like to take a listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Sadie?
Just a point of order, Your Honor, should the motion include adopting the resolution?
Yes, it should. Did you hear Mr. Cole say that? Mr. Cole, right, you may adopt the resolution as well, correct?
Yes.
See? Further discussion, you know, related to refunding. Seeing done then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition, motion carries to the unanimous. I have a vote of 14, I consent, Madam clerk, I have 15.
Resolution, LoC 2012 applications. To Your Honor, more, filed through the Council, David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance. The city of Danbury is eligible to make application to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management through the local capital improvement program to fund various projects. Funds were set aside in the city's available entitlement balance to fund various Terry Wall projects, and the city would like to make application to the state for the following at this time. Terry Wall Mansion roof replacement slash repair, $85,000. Terry Wall Mansion replace alarm system, $1,602, and Terry Wall Mansion renovate school building, $80,000. As other projects are evaluated and ready to be commenced, resolutions will be submitted at future city council meetings to request the use of unobligated LoC funds from the city's entitlement balance. The city council is respectfully requested to consider these resolutions at its next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Perkins. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolutions. To make application to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management through the local capital improvement program to fund the Terry Wild Mansion roof replacement repair of $85,000. The Terry Wild Mansion replace the alarm system of $1,602, and the Terry Wild Mansion renovate the school building of $80,000.
Second. First, the main seconded by Mr. Knapp, discussion related to the LoC authorizations by Mr. Talon, or go ahead.
Thanks, Your Honor. I just want a clarification, the renovation of the school building, is that the structure essentially across the street on Mountainville from the Charles House?
Yes, it is. Just for clarity, that's to renovate it, not into a school, so it becomes a apartment so that we can lease it up and generate some revenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Dischant?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's embarrassing to what Paul just said, the building that is on Mountainville Road, it used to be a nursery or...
Correct.
Is that city property now?
It is.
Why is there a Nolan sign on the front of the building?
I think because Mr. Nolan was marketing to lease it with the school. The Terry Wall was working to try to get a penny in there. The challenge of your management, to give a little history here, was that the new standards that the state has put on more specific kinds of schools, meant that you had to renovate the building to such a level that you, the payoff would have been years from now to be able to do that, so the authority decided that a useless would be to use it for residential purposes, so that's why it's not, but that's kind of the background. Any other discussion? Seeing done then, I'll try your mind, and LoC, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition, motion carries to the unanimous. Item 16 through 18 were consent, Madam clerk, item 19, please.
ADHAC report investment policy statement.
That was chaired by Mr. Levy. Mr. Levy, would you like to read the report?
Chair. Chair, President Warren Levy called a committee meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Committee member present, Warren Levy, Chairman, Jack Knapp also, committee member absent, Ben Schmies. Also present, Les Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel, David St. Hilaire, and Director, Director of Finance. After stating the charge of the committee, Chairman Levy asked Mr. St. Hilaire to review the investment policy to be discussed. Mr. St. Hilaire explained that the policy was not currently written in one single source. This would update, consolidate, as well as ensure that the best practices are being used and that continuity, continuity could be easily established. He stated further that the type of investments were mandated by state, by the state, but the city has discretion as to how the funds are invested. The goal of the policy is to minimize risk and maximize earning potential. A discussion including cash deposits, money available for investments, and inflation versus interest rate ensued. Chairman Levy asked if the policy was required by any bonding agency or had any effect on the bonding rate. Mr. St. Hilaire stated that some bonding agencies expect that borrowing municipal use best practice, best practice, but he is not aware of any specific requirement or effect. Chairman Levy asked if there was an effect on other elected officials, such as the city treasurer. Mr. Pinter stated that the city treasurer is the individual responsible for administering the policies through the Department of Finance. Further discussion of the administration of the policy took place. Mr. St. Hilaire wanted to point out section 4.6 would allow the mayor to appoint the advisory committee to hire a financial advisor. A brief discussion ensued. Chairman Levy asked for clarification regarding modifications made by the Director of Finance. Mr. St. Hilaire stated the policy would only allow modification to dependencies. Mr. Pinter confirmed that the modification, other than dependencies, required city council approval. Mr. Knapp asked if there was anything in the policy that would limit the Director of Finance from performing his duties. Mr. St. Hilaire stated it would not. He and his staff are currently practicing the policy, but it has not been written in a single place. Mr. Knapp asked why this policy was being enacted through a resolution rather than an ordinance. Mr. Pinter stated that the current guidelines state that the policy should be adopted by the resolution, and it established a timely method for review. Mr. Matt, Knapp made a motion, which was seconded by Chairman Levy to recommend, recommends that the city council adopt the resolution to accept the recommendations of the Director of Finance and the Treasurer of the city of Danbury to adopt a statement of investment policies and guidelines for cash management as proposed, together with the authority to modify said statement dependencies as permitted by law. Vote, votes all in favor, motion unanimously approved. Respectfully submitted, Warren Levy, committee chairperson, Jack Knapp, pensions.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Sade?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move to a separate quarter to present a top recommendation committee.
Second. First, the main seconded by Mr. Negerzep, discussion related to the investment policy. Mr. Rattler?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the floor to, through the, I'm sorry, through the chair to Les Pinter, Corporation Mr. Pinter, for the purposes of definition in the resolution, can you define the word dependencies for me?
Necessaries are, for the purpose of this document anyway, necessities are attachments which would further clarify what the investment types are, which doesn't be able to be. If the, if statutorily they're going to change their required, so dependencies to be attached, that would also be a necessity if we're in form of a listed client.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sade. Further discussion, Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to, to Mr. St. Hilaire, my instructor. I don't have the, the original document in front of me now, but I do remember it mentioning mortgage-backed securities, MBOs, that's kind of a, kind of a scary word. I'm not even sure if those things have been totally leveraged. What is, what is our role with those types of things, and in your opinion, how does this benefit you and your office?
First off, we, we don't have really that choice of where to go with this, in the sense that the state dictates what we can and cannot invest in. Simply, what a policy does is it sets procedures in which we can do that, but not what we can invest in. It limits us what we can do. So when we're talking about investments, we're not talking about, say, a pension type, we're talking about our idle cash. So it's a...
So it's important to station every, we should make here. We're not talking about equities or the stock market or anything like that. All right? So, you know, we can invest in obligations, United States, T-bills, those kind of things. You know, that's really what we're talking about here. Uh, what this will allow us to do, it, you know, it's important to have written policies. And this is going to be the first of several policies that we'll present before the board over the next many months. Uh, but this is, uh, you know, we do this routinely for our pension board. Uh, we practice much of what, uh, nearly everything that we, we have proposed in the written policy before you now. Uh, but, but it's very important to have it written. It's recommended by, uh, by nearly everyone that the, all the, the GFOA and the radi agencies do recommend that you have, uh, you know, written policies. However, the, the one distinction in this policy that you'll find from any of the other policies is I also recommend, uh, that the mayor have the ability to appoint a board, you know, some kind of a board committee for this, which I think is important for anyone in, in this position, in the finance director position, to have that access. So I think, I think it's, uh, in, in general, written policies are, are always good for any office, especially in my office here. Thank you, Senator.
Any other discussion related to the investment policy? If you have that, I'll try your minds all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Our motion passes unanimously. Let's see, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, have a look.
Item twenty, ADHAC report prevention of housing blight.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Rattell.
Your Honor, thank you. I was chairman of this committee, and, uh, it recently has been brought to my attention that in the latest legislative session for our state, um, House Representatives and Senate, that some changes to the state's enabling blight programs, which the city had been enacting, blight programs, bill has been through some changes in this latest legislative session. And based on that, um, I would just request an objection that we recommit this back to the ADHAC, um, so that the ADHAC may review these recent changes. So we don't do this now and then change it again. State's changes going back October first, two thousand and twelve. So if the ADHAC chooses to change it to align with that statute, we'll be in a great position time-wise in not doing this again and again to achieve the same goal.
Seeing none, no objection, we'll, uh, we'll so order this be recommitting. Uh, Madam Clerk, I'm trying to find it.
Twenty-one, ADHAC report service property sale, Wick.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Levy.
Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to a public hearing, Charles Wright, committee is on hold.
Seeing no objection, so order the public hearing.
Point of power, Mr. Levy, Your Honor. Just to clarify that this is just a proposal, not a vote, and that you still have to come to the council, but to be filed by committee of the whole. So a public hearing will be held, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Seeing no objection, so order. Uh, Mr. President, Department reports.
Well, I make a motion to re-reading the Department of Reports, as all members have got these, and these are, uh, Indian, uh, December six, July.
Seconded by, Mr. Perkins. Discussion on your Department reports. Discussion on your Department reports. Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Chief of Police, Chief Baker.
Chief Baker.
Uh, Chief, that was reported in the public speaking session, where we knew that although there was a spike reported in burglaries in April, um, the spike wasn't as large as the spike was in the before. Can you give us some knowledge about giving away the business department position on what, what's going on with this? And are we seeing the trend staying that high or is it dropping off in this coming month? Or just enlighten us a little bit about it?
Uh, primarily for the month of May, we had about fifty burglaries, which is a instance of a last year's spike. Um, analyzing, there's no particular, uh, you know, geographic pattern or a particular time of day or day of week pattern. Many crimes, crimes of opportunity where, um, unlocking those unlocked doors, screens are being broken. Um, we've seen use of motor scooters. Uh, they seem to be taking easily concealed items like, uh, jewelry, sometimes a laptop or gun. Um, with the port of the museum, there was a rest of five point one, three suspects. Three days later, we identified another suspect, uh, incident happened in Brookfield, Danbury line. Um, we're working several life cases, but, uh, why this is happening, um, I have my own theories. Number one, we send in economic, uh, you know, conditions, uh, in a tough shape for about five years right now. Uh, people lose friends, England are addicted. Early onset of the warm weather this year. And, uh, don't forget the fact that, uh, back when we started balancing the budget in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we closed professional institutions. And I think we're starting to see the impact of that. Um, so we have a handle on it. It's really not anything different than what happened last year. Um, you know, we'll get it under control with, uh, trying to drive a hundred of them all at once.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Chief, last year, I believe it was last year, we had a problem within the Indian community where we were having thefts targeted towards that, um, national even. We, you had a clinic, if you will, down at the police department where you got everybody together. There was a few, uh, the police officers that went through preventative maintenance procedures that people, uh, can take in order to limit the, the opportunity for theft. Is there somebody that they would contact there? Is there a department down there that we have established that with officers that I know that they, they talk to them, they even volunteer to come up to some of the houses to check, they go through the houses? What is the program, uh, is, is situated now?
Well, yeah. Look, I usually, we actually just put up a, uh, video, uh, with some security tips for current burglaries. Uh, but that's under our community services provision. They'd like to come out and do an actual survey. And if, uh, you'd like, we'd be glad to do some kind of public meeting. Although, like you said earlier, there's no real geographic pattern happening there to where there's no particular victim. Uh, and like I said, there's crimes of opportunity. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, myself, uh, I would think in terms of prevention, the best thing is to know your neighbors, to know your, uh, neighborhood. His policy, if there's any suspicious occurrence in your neighborhood, nothing is insignificant. And like I say, these are very much crimes of opportunity. So somebody driving back to house on a motor scooter, they're getting out of there real quick, um, so call the police. And just lock your doors, lock your windows, those, uh, prevent a lot of crime, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Further discussion in separate quarters. Uh, Mr. Taylor, and then Mr. Cowan.
Thank you. Um, just like, um, you know, project I drive by pretty much a couple of times every day, the Germantown Reenlinement, uh, my light, the tank construction services at Public Works, it did a great job there. Get a lot of the work was done in-house, and that project came out on time, under budget, and it improved a, I personally was hit by someone in that intersection, and I think it's gone a long ways to, um, improve traffic flow and safety of intersections. Give my thanks to those, to, to those departments and all the state departments who worked on that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Mr. Cowan, second aye.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to express my thanks to Mr. Stillman from the unit for applying job. Uh, we had a constituent issue in my neighborhood, and Sean was extremely responsive and was extremely effective, and I just want to publicly thank you for that, Sean. I appreciate it. And I do appreciate how you did for this, and great job between you and your son, hustle. Pretty big.
We came home the morning after, and we went there, man.
So just wants to have...
Thank you, Mr. Stillman. Um, further discussion, Mr. Curry.
Your Honor, this is probably a drug to the duty. Do you know where we stand with the, that, uh, property on Rose Street, uh, that's the Canyon Drive, and the guy was wearing all the trees?
That, uh, I, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Pinter, but I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pinter, I think we, we are still in court with that individual. Uh, we have tried to negotiate, and we feel it would be a fair and reasonable settlement to the, uh, issue. We, we haven't gotten the positive response we wanted from that person, uh, so we continue to, you know, to pursue this, uh, this, uh, legal action.
That's correct. Uh, we, we have to give file, we'll sue against the property owner for damages and coverage costs that we had to, I had to engage an outside counsel to fight the litigation. It's not a major case, but it was a case where we, we moved in the order from Woodbury, uh, the, uh, it was in the files, there's depositions coming up, so we don't obviously opt against the process. So hopefully we'll recover damages, statutory damages plus legal costs. So jury is out.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Levy. As long as we're talking about trees, I'd like to mention the fact that the Forest Tree Division, uh, working with Danbury Lions Club and the, uh, with the Danbury Garden Club, Pembroke School, and also down at Knosha, uh, implanting sugar maples as they have done for a number of years to beautify our city. So I thank the Forest Tree Department as well as the, uh, the clubs, that civic-minded clubs in Danbury.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Levy. Further discussion on your Department reports. Further discussion. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have one add-on item that creates the, uh, building committee, uh, which we clearly enacted, so Mr. Cowan.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, then we add item number twenty-three, ninth agenda, investigation of expansion renovation, there are three of the existing schools for common current and future overcrowding, and formation of a committee to investigate.
Second, this is made and seconded by, uh, Mr. Sadi. All favorite adding this as item number twenty-three. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Um, Madam Clerk, could you just, uh, read the resolution?
Resolution: Investigation for company overcrowding in schools. Res, the City Council of the City of Danbury authorizes the Board of Education of the City of Danbury to the superintendent of schools to file a grant application or applications with, uh, related documents with, into the State of Connecticut Department of Education and/or its Department of Construction Services, and to accept a grant or grants for state reimbursement funding for the expansion, renovation, and/or improvement of existing schools, and, whereas a building committee is established for the purpose of the foregoing to consist of the following individuals. The city members will be Marie Corry, Chairman, Daniel Garrett, Richard Palanzo, Charles Hopey Junior, Antonio Idarola. School Department staff, Richard Jauver, Ed Arm, Cindy Merrick-Chine. Uh, Board of Education members is Eileen Alberts, Kathleen Molinaro. City Council members are Fred Viscanti and Mary Tysholz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just kind of like to make a motion that the seat of communication and adopt the resolution which authorizes the Board of Education of the City of Danbury to the superintendent of schools to file grant applications to the State Department of Education for construction services, and the establishment of a school board committee with the members forming by the legislature.
Second, this is made seconded by Mr. Redmore. A discussion. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Glad to see this coming to the force moving forward. Uh, as to it outlined earlier this year with regard to the investment school overcrowding and a positive in the American Court, public works, and the other analysis that the city did. Uh, the question I have, though, is, um, on the agenda item we have, it's just a one city council member, and I don't have any objections to Mary Tysholz being on there. Just want to clarify whether that's a skirner's error, and there's another resolution?
There is another resolution to file with the clerk. Uh, my apologies to the council members, um, Mary's name is never to be left off.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Nobody puts Mary to you. Uh, any other, uh, discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries unanimously. This time I'll extend all committees, and we have ten motions to adjourn. If I can, all three adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?